Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. This is our first council meeting on a video platform, and you'll see that in addition to our mayor and council, we have our department heads joining us today. I'd like to thank all our department heads and city staff for their work to keep the city running. Once again, we'll be taking public comments by email. We encourage you to send comments on agenda items as well for the public comment period. And the clerk will give instructions, but you can send them to cityofclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. Please put your full name and address in the body of the email and indicate the topic of your comment in the subject line. So, on that note, Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's office in the open public meeting notice dated April 9, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Shall I... okay.
Okay, yes, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Here.
President Fox?
Here. Now, I'd like everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. You'll see the flag in Chief Evers's office, and perhaps Chief Evers would like to lead us in the pledge, since he's got the flag there.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, good republic, which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read the notice regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised, the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting will also be streaming live on YouTube, and to view this meeting via YouTube Live, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the bottom of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during the meeting. Through public notice, the City Clerk's office has advised the public that if anyone wishes to ask a question or make a comment during these proceedings, they may do so by sending an email to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org in advance of the meeting and during the meeting. We will do our best to accommodate all members of the public who wish to provide public comment. I will identify the individual providing the written comment and will read and summarize and/or summarize the comment publicly. Administration and/or members of the governing body will provide answers and/or responses when applicable. If you are sending an email during the meeting, please include your full name and address in the body of your email. In the subject line, please include the date of this council meeting and, if possible, the matter you are commenting on. Only those emails which include the full name of the sender will be read during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, we are going to defer the approval of the minutes of closed session and regular session of March 24th for consideration at the April 28th meeting. So, we'll move on directly to reports. So, first, Madam Mayor, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I just want to thank every employee of the City of Summit, who you are working so hard and being brave and selfless, and it's really an honor to work with you as your mayor. And I also want to thank our council members, who are working tirelessly. We're all worried about our neighbors, our family, our friends, and I'm just in awe of how hard everyone's working and how well we're all working together. So, my report. I'm asking residents to give to the Sustained Summit Fund to support our struggling local businesses. This fund was created through a partnership between the Summit Foundation, formerly known as the Summit Area Public Foundation, Summit Downtown, Inc., and several local residents and larger businesses that understand the importance of helping our small businesses impacted by the COVID-19 restrictions. So far, more than 69 businesses have applied for help, and the fund has raised over $140,000 in just one week. So, please go to summendowntown.org to donate on the GoFundMe site or by PayPal. You can also mail a check to Summit Downtown, Inc., 18 Bank Street, Summit, New Jersey, 07901. And I've said before, but just to reiterate, Summit Downtown, Inc. is a 501(c)(3), so your donations are tax deductible. The New Jersey Economic Development Authority has begun accepting applications for small business emergency assistance loans. The $10 million program will provide working capital loans of up to $100,000 to small and mid-sized businesses. However, that money's going fast, and in fact, the EDA announced today that they're accepting donations to help build that fund. So, I think the federal government hopefully is stepping in to add more stimulus. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce has also created a complete listing of all of the coronavirus resources for small businesses. Information on this list and the NJEDA emergency assistance loans is available at cityofsummit.org/coronavirus. There is a ton of information that is updated multiple times a day on the coronavirus separate page of the city website, and I urge everyone to look at it regularly. The following is a statement from Summit Police Chief Robert Weck following the April 1st announcement that he had tested positive for COVID-19 coronavirus. Quote, "I would like to thank the entire Summit community for its expressions of support and concern for me during my recovery from the COVID-19 coronavirus. Hearing from so many of you certainly helped me get through this extremely difficult time, and I am happy to say that I am on my way to a full recovery. Once again, the Summit community demonstrates why it is an amazing place to live and work. I also want to thank the Summit Police Department, all the first responders and essential staff for their dedication and professionalism throughout these turbulent times. I encourage everyone to stay at home and practice social distancing. Working together by staying apart, we will control the spread of this virus. It is definitely a serious matter. Please stay safe and be well. I'm extremely encouraged to hear that Chief Weck is doing so well and on his way to a full recovery. With this in mind, I reiterate that physical distancing is essential to control the spread of COVID-19 in Summit. Now that the weather is getting warmer and people want to be outdoors, please continue to follow these guidelines. I encourage you to go to cityofsummit.org/coronavirus to get very helpful information and updates. The Communications Office, as I said before, adds content to the page many times a day, so it really is a valuable resource to get accurate and timely information, and it's highly important. Look, we'll get through this. It's been a tough time for many people, and we shouldn't... you know, yes, the numbers are kind of sort of starting to flatten out over the last few days, but that doesn't mean we're out of the woods. So, I encourage everyone to continue to be resilient and be safe. Thank you. That's it, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and now on to Michael Rogers for the city administrators' report. Michael?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. So, I'll start off with some good news. The transfer station is now open, as communicated yesterday. It's by appointment only on Tuesdays and Fridays from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Each 15-minute appointment must be scheduled in advance on the city website. If residents do not have online access, please call 908-273-6404 to schedule an appointment. Social distancing will be strictly enforced, and residents are required to wear a mask. For more information and to schedule an appointment, please go to cityofsummit.org/transferstation. Executive Order 122 issued by Governor Murphy orders all nonessential construction projects to cease operation, and that was effective last Friday, April 10. The Construction Office has issued guidance on projects that may be undertaken or continue or will be suspended. I encourage anyone who is wondering whether their project is exempt or have any questions, please visit the website under cityofsummit.org/coronavirus for more municipal construction guidance. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And now on to the council president's report. There have been a number of regulatory changes since our last council meeting. First of all, customers entering New Jersey restaurants and bars for takeout are now required to wear face coverings, according to an order by Governor Phil Murphy. Face coverings must also be worn by workers. To see more information on the order, go to cityofsummit.org/coronavirus. And as the mayor mentioned, there's an entire page of information about everything having to do with the coronavirus at all levels of government, so it's a great resource. In addition, group gatherings in April and May are canceled, and so are the Summit Free Market and the community-wide Earth Day cleanup. The Summit Free Market building is still under construction, and the Free Market event will be rescheduled at a time this summer, hopefully in the new building. The Earth Day cleanup will also be rescheduled at a date to be announced later. Check the city website, cityofsummit.org, for more information. Instead of an official Earth Day event this year, residents are encouraged to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, which falls on April 22nd, by choosing your own green activity anytime in April. You may celebrate in a variety of ways: plant some seeds, start composting, make a poster, chalk the driveway with a green message, have a backyard campout, or just take a picture of something beautiful out in nature. And please remember to maintain a safe distance of at least six feet from anyone who's not in your immediate family while you're outside. We also encourage residents to track the participation by posting a picture or description on the Environmental Commission's Facebook group page, which is Summit NJ Environmental Commission. Please also use the hashtag #EarthDay2020 in 07901 to record your activity if you post. You can visit the city's website and find the Environmental Commission and Recycling Advisory Committee pages on the website, which have information about tips and other green things that might be of use. All state and city parks are closed by the governor's executive order until further notice. In Summit, this includes Bryant Park and Passaic River Park. Summit municipal parks remain open, and social distancing requirements are being enforced. If citizens do not follow these guidelines, Summit parks will also be closed. Please do your part to maintain a physical distance of six feet between non-family members. It will help us to keep our parks open and, most importantly, control the spread of the COVID-19 virus. An unfortunate number of sanitizing wipes, masks, and gloves have been found littering sidewalks, streets, and in parking lots. This is not only unsightly, but it increases the possible spread of COVID-19. Please discard these items into trash bin and do not flush any wipes. I know this is a challenging time in Summit and throughout the country. However, I'm confident that we will help one another and will come through this challenge stronger than ever. Be strong and stay safe. So, now it's time for presentations, and we have a presentation from Don Nelson, our emergency management coordinator.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the invite. Mayor Rades, members of council, and citizens of Summit. As you can guess, the last few weeks have been pretty busy for the Office of Emergency Management. Basically, we're in contact with the county OEM. Looking every couple of days, they're providing us with guidance, and they're giving us orders and executive orders from the governor that we're pushing through to our PIO officer here in town. We're also working with the county requesting PPE for all of our emergency agencies, as well as other local agencies such as Sage, Summit Oaks Hospital, Ship, and other senior care facilities in town. Some of that PPE is slowly coming in. As we all know, there are issues getting that, but the county's working diligently with the state to get that for us. Chief Evers, who is also a deputy OEM coordinator, is working with Overlook Hospital very closely to help them deal with some concerns or things that are going on up there. There's also a teleconference every week with Overlook Hospital, then they keep us updated on what's going on with them operationally. Our PIO officer, Amy Carnes, is doing a great job pushing information out on our website and to other social media locations. All city agencies, as we all know, are on different work schedules, which shows they meet their needs and keep business operating. As Mike Rogers said and the mayor said, transfer stations open, so that's a good thing. PD, Fire Department, and First Aid Squad will have their emergency operations plans up and running, and all agencies are doing very well. And as you all know, Summit First Aid Squad organized a tribute or appreciation parade for Overlook Hospital last week. We had quite a few agencies from Union County there attended, so it was very well received by Overlook and, I think, you know, different parts of the community. Some senior centers in town are reporting no issues. I've been in touch with them quite frequently, so we haven't seen much going on there, so that's a good thing. I know Summit PD is working along with the Fire Department and OEM to get some equipment through grants, so that's a good thing. Let's see. We've also been working with the state and county OEM to get a request for a public assistance grant, and more information will follow on that. As always, we've been in contact with Megan Avalone from the Board of Health, Regional Board of Health down in Westfield, and we're talking quite frequently, and she's given us guidance. There's always things coming out from the State Board of Health about changes, so we're keeping on top of those. I'd like to recognize many groups around town that are stepping up to help out, such as Flag and the local restaurants providing food for first responders and healthcare workers, so that's great. Some families are making masks, so that's good, too. And on a personal note, I just can't stress enough that we have to follow the CDC guidelines. Wear your face masks in public. Make sure you wash your hands. Keep your social distance. If you do the right thing, we'll all be better off. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Don? Does anyone just looking to see? Well, we appreciate you take... oh, yes, Chief Evers, you've got something?
I'd just like to add one thing, that Captain Bartolotti had been working with the Board of Health from the state, getting information for all the updates for Summit COVID patients in summer as well. He's also one of the deputy coordinators as well, so just want to recognize his good work as well. So, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yes, Council President Susan Hairston?
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Nelson, I just want to thank you and the entire OEM team during these unprecedented times. And as the safety chair, having the opportunity to see everyone in action and coordinate so well, I just want to reiterate to our community that they can have confidence in us during this time. And I would like to ask you to just reiterate what you think is the most important thing that the residents can do to do their part during this time about the physical distancing. I know we've been calling it social distancing, but if you could just reiterate that for us.
Sure. I mean, I can't stress it enough. You know, I live in town, so I drive around town quite a bit, and I see, you know, groups of people being too close together. The social distancing is very important. Wearing face masks out in the public when you have to go out is extremely important. Washing hands, your personal hygiene is extremely important. Following the CDC guidelines, which you can see on the City of Summit website, the COVID-19 page, follow those. This is new to all of us. This is something that we, you know, we've never... I've never dealt with this in my lifetime, so it's interesting to see what's going on. But as a whole, I think to see Summit's doing very well. You know, driving through town is kind of eerie, but it's, you know, people are doing what they need to do. So, that's a good thing. We just have to keep that social distance, wash our hands, and wear our masks when we're out in public, not only to protect ourselves, but to protect those around us. You go to the supermarket, you know, you got to protect those that are helping us get our food. If we can't get food, then we have a problem, so we have to make sure we maintain all that. But just keep an eye on the websites, the CSOM website, the State Board of Health. Go to those websites, the CDC, they give you tons of guidance, and you have to adhere to it. It's really just, you know, it'll take some time. We'll get through this. We'll be stronger. We'll learn from this. It's a new experience, so we'll learn a lot, and we'll come out better on the end. So, thanks for your... and in all honesty, I have to pass that, your appreciation, on to all the department heads. They're all doing a fantastic job. They're managing their agencies. You know, it seems to be flawless. I know there are some issues here and there, but, you know, other than the inconvenience of not being able to go down to the dumps or transfer station or go up to City Hall to pay your taxes, which I think maybe some of us don't want to, but it's, you know... We'll get through this, and the department heads are doing a fantastic job. The mayor's doing a fantastic job representing the City of Summit, so we're all in this together, so nobody can take credit. We're all doing this together, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any comments, any questions from the public on this topic? But you're muted.
No questions received, Council President.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you, Deputy Chief Nelson. We appreciate the work that you and your entire team and all the first responders are doing, and we appreciate you taking the time to come in tonight and give us the update, so...
Thank you very much.
All right, so, and now we're on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have comments?
Yes. Earlier today, and for the past couple of days, we received a total of three emails pertaining to tonight's public comments. All three, one is from Resident Yon Cho, 27 Beekman Terrace. The second one is from Jeff Hankinson at 20 Nob Hill Drive. And the third is Travis Barr, who resides, let me see, I'm sorry, at 101 West End Avenue. All three pertain to their desire to see the transfer station open. And just summarizing that they, you know, they're concerned about having the ability to dispose of yard clippings or grass, and shared some concerns in particular. Mr. Barr shares concerns about having to limit access to the transfer station and have it by appointment only. So, these statements, these questions will be part of the minutes for everybody to read in full, but basically, that's what the questions entail.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Director Cascades, I'd like to turn it over to you to quickly just update the public on what is being done to make the transfer station accessible.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So, as Administrator Rogers mentioned in his report, this transfer station opened today on a modified schedule. It's open on Tuesdays and Fridays from 7:30 to 2:30 by appointment only. And we chose to go with the appointment only to conform to the restrictions set forth by the governor and social distancing. So, we're taking every effort and making every effort to keep our residents safe and our employees safe. So, residents are permitted on those two days by appointment to dispose of bulky waste, household waste, vegetative waste. There will be no pickup at this time permitted of materials such as wood chips or mulch. Commercial vehicles are not permitted at this time, or U-Hauls. It'll just be for residents. Residents are given 15-minute intervals to use their time, their appointment. We're permitting 10 cars in every 15 minutes, which can be used at both locations, either the recycling center or the transfer station. And today, we did see a number of folks that registered. As we only went online yesterday, 2/3 of our appointments were filled today. And we're seeing a number of people that have registered for Friday, next Tuesday, and the following Friday. Folks are doing a good job in conforming to the regulations of the social distancing there. They're being polite as they enter, and things have gone well through today, and we hope to see that in the future. We will consider modifying the schedule as time goes on, as we see improvements, and if we're able to increase the number of days, I'll talk through our committee, my committee, the council committee, and also with Administrator Rogers if we think that we can modify the schedule and increase time for residents to use it. But it is a great amenity to the city, and we want to just be sure that folks are safe and our residents are safe as well. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Director Cascades. We appreciate all the work that you've done on reopening the transfer station. I think there are a lot of very happy residents because of this decision, so thank you for making this work and using some creativity to do this. I see Council Little's hand was up. Did you have a question?
I just wanted to respond as well, and this is, I'm the chair of the Capitol Projects Committee, so this is, the transfer station falls under our committee's purview. We've been discussing this all along, and I want the residents to realize and respond to Mr. Barr's comments that the Community Services Department has done a great job of keeping the essential services of the city going in these difficult times. To do that, we've had to reallocate personnel so that we can maintain safety among our staff and our work crews so that they're not all together at the same time. We have worked hard to make this work so that we can reopen it on a limited basis. There is typically, I've had a number of emails saying that there would be no problem in just opening the transfer station because, you know, there would be no issues with social distancing. And I don't think a lot of residents realize how many cars and how many residents use the transfer station on a typical day. So, we do need to do this and to limit it at this time to make sure that the staff is safe, that the staff can cover all the essential services that are going on in the city, and that so our residents are safe while using the transfer station. We are evaluating it continually. We already had a report back on how things went today. We'll continue to get reports back and see if there's a way to increase the appointment slots or increase the days that are there. But our main concern is the safety of our staff and of our residents, and we'll continue to do that in opening the transfer station.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Little. Anyone else have any comments about this? So, I understand from Madam Clerk that we have another comment that just was received?
Yes. An email was just received from Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodland Avenue. She says, "Good evening. I trust this email finds us all well." She has the following two questions. Why is the Reeves Reed Arboretum having visitor hours on the grounds while Bryant Park is shut down?
I can answer that one. I've been in touch with the staff at the arboretum, and they are taking their cues from the City of Summit, and actually, technically, the property that they operate on is a City of Summit property. So, they are taking their cues from us, and as long as our parks stay open, they will continue to stay open as well, as long as there's no issue with social distancing. And Bryant Park is closed because it's a county park, and the governor's executive order closed state and county parks. So, I think that covers it. If anyone else has anything they'd like to add, feel free. So, there's a second question?
Yes. Second question is, given the potential spread of COVID-19 through reusable bags, is the city reevaluating its plastic ban ordinance?
Director Cascades, would you like to take that one?
Sure. So, we did speak in committee regarding the plastic bag ordinance, and we have decided to not enforce the ordinance on May 1st as scheduled until the COVID restrictions are lifted.
Okay. I would like to add, though, that there is no proof that reusable bags carry COVID-19, and in fact, there are ideas that if you properly wash your bags, they're just as good as using a bag from the...
as good as using a bag from the supermarket. But just in the interest of not putting additional burdens on businesses at this point, since we're operating with a very restricted, you know, the businesses that are open are operated on a very restricted basis, and there's not the ability for us to adequately educate the businesses about the requirements, it made sense in this context to delay enforcement. Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you, Council President. I echo your comments. I think they're exactly on point with regard to this issue. And I'd like to just say that soon, next month, we'll be looking at our budget. One of the biggest line item expenditure increases we're going to have in our budget is with regard to recycling. It's almost double, 100% increase in our costs. While we have this COVID-19 issue going on, we have to be cognizant of the fact that the issues that were existing prior to COVID-19 continue to exist for us, including the fact that we need to address issues dealing with sustainability and plastics. Plastics, bags cannot be used by the recyclers. We have to reduce our plastic intake, as Director Cascades said, in order, and as you said, in order to reduce the burdens temporarily, given the circumstances we're dealing with. But long-term problems remain long-term problems, and we need to still address them. And so people shouldn't just use COVID-19 as a basis of, you know, not having to address long-term problems. We need to address those as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Anyone else have any comments? Okay. Were there any other comments, questions or comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Okay. So I am declaring that the public comment period is closed, and we'll now move on to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for hearing, for introduction, I'm sorry. I skipped that. So we're on to ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, could you please read the Capital Projects and Community Services?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 35 Development Regulations Ordinance, Article 4, Subsection 4.3-16, ProD Planned Research Office Development Zone.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little, would you like to introduce it?
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to amend the DRO, which we just passed at the end of last year, if you remember. And during the discussion on the passing of the revised DRO, we did talk about how it was a living document, and that more changes and revisions would be coming as we put it in place and see how it's working. So this is the first of what will probably be a series of revisions and changes and tweaks to the DRO that we passed at the end of last year. This one is specifically to allow research and development of chimeric antigen receptor T-cell therapy as a permitted use in the ProD zone. It's more commonly known as CAR-T. This change in the wording of the DRO is being considered at the request of Bristol-Myers Squibb, as we know, required cell gene last year as well. And it's just to clarify the language that is in the DRO, to allow them to continue with the CAR-T therapy at the facility. And this is being done at the request of their lawyers, just to make sure that it's very clear and that the CAR-T therapy can continue at that location. And this was presented to the planning board. It was considered. The planning board is in full agreement, and I would ask that we introduce this change in language as an ordinance tonight.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston. Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. The motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, we have a bunch of finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan, would you like to get started?
Thank you, Council President. At the last meeting of common council, the municipal parking and sewer operating budgets were introduced. The hearing date for all three was set for April 28th. As a result of the coronavirus pandemic, the state of New Jersey has extended the deadline for adoption of these budget resolutions. Moves the hearing date from April 28th to instead be held at the council meeting on Tuesday, May 26, 2020. There are two main reasons this change makes sense. First, it will provide the council and members of the public with a clearer picture of the budgetary impact of the health crisis. And second, it will allow for greater public participation in the hearing. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments on this matter? Are there any members, comments from members of the public?
No, Madam President.
Okay. And I'm not seeing any hands right now from members of councils, is that correct? Okay, so could we have a roll call vote?
Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay, moving on, Finance Number Two, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 7099 moves the hearing date for the special improvement district budget from April 28th to May 26th. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public, Madam Clerk?
No comments, Madam President.
Okay. Could we have a roll call vote then, please?
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay, moving on, Finance Number Three, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the 2020 temporary municipal budget in the total amount of $3,903,515. This will allow for continued operations through May until the 2020 municipal operating budget is adopted. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from the members of council? Any comments from members of the public?
No, Madam President.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay, Finance Number Four, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the parking utility budget in the total amount of $95,300. As was the case with the last resolution, this will allow for continued operations until the parking utility budget is adopted. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Yes, Councilmember Naidoo.
Oh, thank you, Council President. Just one question, and maybe it's more of a clarification. Obviously, there's very little being done by the parking authority right now because we've not, we're not enforcing, you know, the meters and so forth. I guess we're enforcing it, but we're not having the gates and so forth being done. And here in this budget resolution, there seems to be a number of different activities that, doing maintenance and so forth, that probably are not going to occur, given the current state of play. I presume, basically, this is a placeholder budget that in the event activities could resume, the monies are there in order to be used, but not necessarily that the activities envisioned here would actually be done. Is that a correct interpretation of this?
Councilmember Vartan, do you want to take that?
Sure. That is my understanding. There's two, there's two main things. First is that council has waived the charge for parking fees through April. Council will reassess that decision at the next council meeting on April 28th. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, the money's being appropriated to the emergency fund so that we can spend it if we have to. That is my understanding. If council does, at the April 28th meeting, choose to extend our waiving of the parking fees through May, then it is likely that some of that money will not be spent. Administrator Rogers, do you have anything to add to that?
That's correct, Councilman.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Okay. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. So moving on to our last finance resolution, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. In similar fashion to the last two resolutions, this resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the sewer utility in the total amount of $626,500. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public?
No, Madam President.
Can we have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox, my apologies.
Okay, so moving on, we have two resolutions from Capital Projects and Community Services. Councilmember Little would like to...
Thank you, Council President. If it's all right with you, I'm going to bundle these two resolutions.
Certainly.
These are two resolutions that deal with change orders, both for the City Hall air conditioning project, which was approved by council previously. It is a change order for the cooling tower replacement portion. And this is being done because during the installation, it was discovered that the main conduits that carry electricity, the cooling tower, had deteriorated and allowed water in, also was going into the City Hall underground parking garage. So that necessitated a greater amount, an amount of $5,285 over the anticipated costs. The second part of the change order is for the chiller replacement project. And during that construction, we found that the water piping going to the chiller had experienced a lot of damage and scaling due to the quality of the water and the going through it, and that the condition was much worse than anticipated, and that all that piping needs to be replaced. The good news is that part of this project and this change order is to install a chemical feeder system, which is going to treat the water and create, prevent this type of problem from happening in the future, and extend the life of the new system that's going in. So this change order is for $42,564. There was money in the Capital Projects, these two projects, so that's how it's going to be funded. And I ask that we approve these two resolutions for change orders for the City Hall air conditioning project.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Madam Clerk?
Madam President, no, no comments.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, motions. And moving on, we have two resolutions from Community Programs and Parking Services. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President Fox. This is ID number 6637. This is the authorize change order number 14 and final. This is authorizing change order number 14 and final. This is a community center renovation project for $42,029.05 plus a 21-cent adjustment. This final change order includes earthwork, temporary fencing, temporary heating, several credits for work not completed, and finalized quantities for the entire project, plus a 21-cent adjustment to correct a discrepancy from previous change orders number five through 12. These amounts increase the original contract with H&amp;S Construction and Mechanical by a total of $42,029.26 to bring the total cost of the renovation project to $6,429,147.99. This change order and all previous change orders equals a dollar amount increase of $330,047.98, or a percentage cost overrun of 5.41%. Projects of this large scale typically assume cost overruns in the area of 5% to 10%. Being at the low end of this range, and despite all the significant challenges and unforeseen conditions, reflects on the stellar management of our team and a job well done. Funding for this final change order is being certified against existing funds in capital accounts established for improvements to landscaping and fencing at Investors Field. Finally, on a personal note regarding our new community center. Years ago, when my youngest son was in first grade, I attended one of the initial public meetings about the possibility of a new sorely needed community center. One of the architects consulting at the time, who happens to be a friend, leaned over to me and said, "Your first grader will never play a game in this building. It will take too long." Well, he was wrong. My son played eighth-grade rec basketball this year in our new community center, and it was fantastic. The building got rave reviews. These projects are not easy. There are a lot of moving parts to manage. I want to thank everyone who had a hand in the project. Their hard work and focus enabled our community center to open far sooner than people were saying many years ago. I move this resolution.
I second.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan, and I think very well said. It's a great, the center is a great place, and we look forward to when it can reopen, and the residents can all enjoy it again. So are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Okay, so I'll call for a vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, we have a resolution from the floor, Councilmember O'Sullivan, correct?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. This is a parking resolution. This motion from the floor, this resolution from the floor, I'm sorry, is to authorize execution of a contract suspension agreement with Parking Services Plus for the Broad Street East Valet Parking concession. Currently, this contract runs through December 31st, 2020, at a rate of $11,247.50 per month. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, executive orders have been issued by Governor Murphy, ordering all nonessential businesses to close, and all nonessential employees to work from home. As a result, the use of Summit's parking lots has significantly decreased, and the city is not charging for use of city parking lots during the pandemic. So we want to suspend the city's contract with Parking Services to alleviate some of our costs. The suspension of this contract will be effective May 1st, 2020, until July 31st, 2020. The term of the contract will be extended beyond December 31st, 2020, for an amount of time equal to the suspension period. Because of an uncertain future, because of an uncertain future, the contract may be suspended beyond July 31st, 2020, at the city's discretion. During the suspension, no payments will be made by the city to Parking Services Plus. Should the need arise to valet cars in the Broad Street East slot during the suspension period, the city shall provide two weeks' notice to Parking Services Plus as to the date the contract should resume. Additionally, the city may terminate the contract at any time with or without Additionally, the city may terminate the contract at any time with or without cause in accordance with the RFP. Should the contract be terminated, no further payment will be due to Parking Services Plus. All other terms of the contract remain unchanged. You might ask, why not terminate the contract right now? Well, Parking Services Plus is a good vendor, and we have a good relationship. Suspending the contract gives the city flexibility during the pandemic, alleviates some costs, and allows us to restart the contract with a reliable partner with a small amount of notice. Canceling the contract right now leads us down the road of going out to bid and finding a new partner. We could end up paying more under a new agreement, or we could end up with an unreliable vendor. And there are also more unforeseen consequences of canceling the contract at this time. I move this resolution to suspend our contract with Parking Services Plus.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President. May I just ask if, was there a second to the motion?
Yes, Councilmember Vartan seconded. Okay, so with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, then moving on, we've got one resolution from Safety and Health, Councilmember Hairston.
I'm sorry, I thought that was taken off. Can you please have city clerk let me know what resolution is up?
It's the extending the animal license. Should we come back to you? We'll do law and labor and come back?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bowman, are you ready for two law and labor resolutions?
Sure am. Resolution, law and labor number one, Resolution 7104 is to authorize execution of the settlement agreement for the Bozai lawsuit. As we discussed in closed session, this settlement is proven to be a cost-effective manner to, to solve this this resolution, or this legal matter. I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public?
No, Madam President.
Okay, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, law and labor number two, Councilmember Bowman.
Resolution 7108 is to authorize extension of sick leave with pay through May 14th for a city clerk and office employee. Also, as we discussed in closed session, this employee has a doctor's note extending her, her leave through May 14th. They have the time, and therefore they will be reimbursed or paid with leave. We hope this, we wish this employee a speedy recovery. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
No, Madam President.
Okay, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Hairston, are you ready to do Safety and Health now?
I'm having a technical difficulty here, and if my colleague, Councilwoman Beth Little, can help me out here.
Okay, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. This safety resolution is to extend the 2020 animal license renewal deadline. We have been advised by the Health Register Board of Health. Current 2019 dog and cat licenses will expire on May 31st, but due to the stay-at-home orders issued by Governor Murphy, Executive Order 107, many residents may not be able to fill that requirement to update their pets' rabies vaccinations and other paperwork. Therefore, we would like to extend the license renewal deadline to August 31st, 2020. So I would move this resolution for approval.
And I'll second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public?
No, Madam President.
Okay, so I'll call for a vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're moving on to, let's see, we got all the, we got all the resolutions. Okay, so we're moving on now to the consent agenda. So generally, we take the consent agenda as a whole unless there are any comments from members of the, of council or members of the public. Are there any comments? We're good? Okay.
From the public.
Okay, great. All right, so all in favor? Oh, wait, is there a motion for consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on to council members' comments or new business. Does anyone, any member of council have anything that they'd like to say? Councilmember Bowman, is that, that's your hand?
That's my hand. You know, we've had, we've all had several, you know, acquaintances that have succumbed to the coronavirus, but one of the individuals we worked, many of us worked with here, and that is Sam McGee. He is the former executive director of our joint meeting. And he just retired effective December 31st. And unfortunately, last week, he passed away from the coronavirus. So I just want to express my condolences to him and his family and, and recognize that he led the joint meeting for 15 years and led us through some tough times, Hurricane Sandy, when the waste treatment plant came within seconds of, or inches of, of being flooded. So condolences to he and his family.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowman, and I think I would like to join in that with, on behalf of all of the council and the city, and thanking him for his service and his family for his service. Is there, are there any other members of council? Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to thank Mayor Rades for pointing out the new Sustained Summit Fund that's been started to help our downtown businesses. I also am thinking tonight is the night for the Grace Food Distribution, and they have been under tremendous pressure to provide food to food insecure families in Summit. Their number has grown from providing food on average for 80 families a week to over 350 families last week, and they're expecting the same tonight. So I just, my, want to express, I think on behalf of all of us, I'm sure, our greatest sympathies to any of our residents who are struggling financially or with any issues related to health and family members at this time. But to those that are listening that are able to help and able to reach out a helping hand to their neighbors, there's so many ways to do that. And some of those we've talked about tonight, the Sustained Summit to help our businesses, donations to Grace and to the Community Food Bank, to the other fellow foundation, which is collecting money for various relief in our area, and to the flag organization, which is providing food to their healthcare workers and supporting local restaurants at the same time. There's so many different ways that you can reach out to your neighbors and help at this time, and I think it helps all of us to reach out a helping hand. It helps our mental health, our physical health, and our well-being for our town. So I just wanted to say that, that we will get through this together, and there's so many ways that we can do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. I'd like to add that you can go to the city's website on the COVID page, so cityofsummit.com, and go to the COVID page, I'm sorry, and go to the COVID page. And there you can find a list of how you can help, and there's also, the tabs on the left side, there's the, how can you help? And there's also, if you're looking for help, there are organizations listed there. And we also have one new organization, Shield of Summit, that's working with our seniors, and they, they are mostly found on Facebook right now, but I would urge you to go take a look there. It's a resource for all kinds of help for seniors. And we thank all of the hundred, over 100 volunteers who've been working on that project as well. Are there any other council members, Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President Fox. I would like to give an update on behalf of the library, who has been working feverishly to provide additional supports. And so just want to make sure folks are aware that they've been including virtual programs, which are lectures, storytime, book discussion, online books, and databases, and movies. And you can access these on the library's website. And in addition to the amazing coordination from the different programs or different departments in Summit, the library is now working to put together a call resource for individuals who will need assistance with filling out unemployment forms. And that will, those details will be worked out over the next week. And our communications officer will be making that available online, and you'll be able to find out about it on the library's website as well. So this is just another example of how across the city, within our departments and with our volunteers, everyone is stepping up to do their part in these unprecedented times. So I just want to really, again, even thank our, our city clerk for allowing us to be able to do this meeting from home. And people have no idea all of the intricacies that are involved in this, and so I just want to give a shout out to our, our department heads who make things really smooth for us. Thank you.
I, I second that, and I think, you know, I'm seeing all of the hands clapping, so I think we'd all like to, to say thank you to our clerk and, and our deputy clerk and our, our technology folks for helping us get this all put together and meeting virtually. So it's, it's been an adventure for everyone, I think. Any other council members with comments this evening? Okay.
Marjorie?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They're not going to do an SNL skit on us.
What do you have in mind?
Rosie did such a good job.
Aw.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so anyway, no, if there are no other comments, then I think we, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Be safe and be well, everybody.